Okay. There it is. Welcome, everyone. We're going to give the list some time to populate. Dr. Palano, how many folks should I be expecting to see in our participants?
Approximately eighty this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we're already up to around, you know, in the thirty. So just give us a few more minutes, folks. And we'll get started. Let's let the list populate a little bit more. It seems to have leveled off, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Work Session of November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, and I'd like everyone to keep in their thoughts and prayers, the victims of the accident that happened on seventy-nine last week. Thank you very much, and we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to introduce Ms. Andracy for that, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's student for I Love the Pledge is Reese Abraham. Reese is a second grader from Hayne Elementary School. She was nominated this evening by Hayne Elementary Principal, Ms. Kristen White. Reese is the daughter of Jeff and Jessica Abraham of Cranberry Township. And Reese's mom tells us that Reese loves school, so much so that there is no one subject she likes more than the others. She likes them all equally. Her hobbies are building Legos and playing ice hockey at the Lemieux Sports Complex with her little brother. When she grows up, she tells us she would like to be a doctor at Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. So now we're going to hear directly from Reese, and at this time, I would ask the board and the administration to please turn off their videos. And I would invite everyone to please stand and join us if they are able, as Reese leads us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Dr. Palano, when you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Always a highlight of the meeting. I'll wait for it. Looks like everyone's cameras are back on, so we'll go ahead and take the roll call. Lisa, if you would, please.
Ms. Bradle. Mr. Giattolio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison. Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Present.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Whittle.
Here.
And Mr. Whitterson.
Here.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to information reports again by Ms. Andracy again.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Under our information reports, we have two items this evening. Our first item, twenty-one outstanding Seneca Valley singers were recently qualified for the two thousand and twenty-one Pennsylvania Music Education Education, excuse me, Associations Honors Choir. And each year, the District Five PMEA holds auditions for the Honors Course Festival. All students in Beaver, Butler, Lawrence, and Mercer Counties are eligible to audition. And a three-day festival culminated with an in-person concert in or auditorium at Westminster Westminster College on October thirtieth. And I would invite you to review the backup where you will see all twenty-one names of those students who were chosen, and we congratulate them for an outstanding job at representing our district. Under item two, October may be over, but the impact of one group is far from over. The week leading up to Seneca Valley's Pink Night Football Game on October twenty-ninth, the Seneca Valley Band Members held their annual campaign called SV Band Gives Back. Their designated charity this year was Cancer Bridges, and this was done in support of Seneca Valley's very own athletic director, Miss Heather Lewis. And by the end of the week, they had raised over twenty-one hundred dollars, which surpassed their goal. And at the game, the band, along with the SV cheerleaders and the student section, showed their support by donning pink shirts, pink T-shirts and ribbons. And if you want to learn more about Cancer Bridges, we would encourage you to visit cancerbridges.org, where you will learn quite a bit more. So we congratulate them for an awesome job at raising those funds. Moving on, under Dates to Remember, earlier this evening, our parents of students in grades seven through twelve should have received their notice that report cards for the first nine weeks have now been released. On Thursday, November eleventh, this is Veterans Day. There is no school for students. On November twelfth, which is Friday, that will mark the end of the first trimester for grades K through six, who are in the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice. On November fifteenth, next Monday, we will return for the School Board Action Meeting at seven P M. November seventeenth will mark the end of the first trimester, grades K through six, for those who are attending in person. And then November nineteenth will mark the first day of all P I double A winter sports. And then November twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth, this is a reminder that is our Thanksgiving break, so that that is a district holiday, which means there is no school for students or staff. And then Hanukkah will take place November twenty-eighth through December sixth. And then on December sixth, we will be gathering for a school board reorganization meeting, and that will take place, and it's important to note, it's an earlier time, but that will take place at five P M. And that is all I have, unless you or any other board members have questions, Mr. President.
Are there any questions for Ms. Andracy? Or comments? I will say, I received the email on the report cards. I wasn't expecting it. It slipped my mind, and so there it was. I didn't get the chance to look at them yet. I'm sure that everyone's excited that we actually have report cards again, so. Except the students sometimes. Since there's no other questions or comments, we're gonna move right to agency reports. We're gonna start off with the VOTEC. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Giattolio. We did have a VOTEC J O C meeting last Thursday. All is well at the VOTEC. I'll call out just a couple items. We will have some board turnover as part of the J O C, and so we'll look forward to have some new members on the J O C. The most importantly, I would highlight that on November eighteenth, the VOTEC is having an open house at six P M for parents and students to give an overview of the programs that the VOTEC offers. So I would encourage anybody, even if you have not before, it's really cool to see what programs the VOTEC offers. So no need to R S C P, and I would encourage anybody to go check it out. And as we talked about last month, given the increased demand for the programs at the VOTEC, which is a very good thing, we are having a little bit of trouble keeping up with staffing to adequately adequately staff those those programs, and especially as it relates to the welding program, which has a lot, has a lot of interest this year. So another P S A that if you know anybody with four or more years of welding experience that maybe has a passion for teaching others, we would appreciate it. And that is all from me, Mr. Giattolio.
Any questions for Mr. Jacobs?
Just a quick one, Mike. We're now in November. Where are our numbers from Seneca Valley kind of leveled out at? Just a range. Is it a hundred and twenty, is it a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty?
I think last I looked, Jim, I think we were right at one thirty, which was a pretty great increase over last year, and I will check that for you and let you know if I'm wrong.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I wanted to add, as part of the VOTEC presentation, there is an upcoming open house for the VOTEC, correct? I believe Ms. Andracy linked this to our, we linked our website to the VOTEC Open House. Ms. Andracy, I don't know if you're, if you have that date in front of you.
That is correct, and I'm looking as we speak. It is actually
November eighteenth, Tracy.
Eighteenth. It's directly on our homepage.
Great. And so I do want another P S A, and that is for any students who are thinking about scheduling the VOTEC as half of their day for next year, the vocational school in Butler. You may go to the VOTEC in person this year on that date in the evening with your parents and see demonstrations by our students, by the teachers at the vocational school. You may look at all of the different departments, and it is not too early to begin thinking about this now for our high school students.
Mr. Nickel, I undersold us. One fifty-four Seneca Valley students.
Woo! That is impressive.
That's very impressive. It's great.
I would like to add to Tracy's comment, or Dr. Vitell's comment, sorry. And I will say that, you know, if you're a parent of a middle schooler, or any parent in the district, to go to the VOTEC just to see the facilities. As we know, there's always been, you know, VOTEC's been viewed differently. There's always been a stigma with it. I know that Mr. Jacobs will admit that he's been battling that, you know, Mr. Nickel and myself, when we were on that board, it's always been a battle. The VOTEC is something special. I invite all parents to go and tour the facility. It's a Thursday. Who's doing anything on a Thursday in November anyway, until the next week? Go go up, meet the students that are up there. They're some of the most polite, engaging students. When they're doing something special like that, you see the excitement. It is something that is very special. So I would invite all parents to go up, get a feel for it, know what's out there in our community that you can, you know, encourage, maybe not your child, but maybe some neighborhood children that you know, it would be a good thing for. It's probably the one place that we, as a district, don't mind spending extra money to send kids up there to the VOTEC.
Hey, Mr. President, can I add a piece to that? You know, the last two weeks, I mean, you guys bring up some great points. The last two weeks, as I've been around, visiting lots of people in our community. Many people don't don't understand what we have to offer there. There are, I think, the email said there's fifteen to sixteen different programs that these kids can learn, they can get certified for, and they can graduate with their certifications and go right to really well-paying careers. And as you said, it's built into our tax dollars. It's there already. Parents don't have to pay some additional funds for that. So we need to make sure everybody's aware of that, and I think sometimes the kids aren't talking to the parents enough, because a lot of parents were, didn't even know it existed. So this is an opportunity for parents to get up to the VOTEC and really visit and see what they have to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Nickel.
Just one additional comment, and Eric, you and I have said this over the years, and like we talked about it, Fred, just it doesn't, the going over and taking advantage of what's available there does not preclude a student from moving on to some secondary program. I mean, I can't tell you the dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of times when we've asked students who are students of the month, making presentations, we've been there for meals, where we say, hey, where are you headed when you're done? Well, I'm off to I U P. I'm off to this program. I'm off to that program. And, you know, I know I recall the story of a young man who was deciding between moving on to a career in the trades or going to M I T. So it's just, you know, parents, and I see there's seventy-seven attendees on. Please, no, that's just because your student expresses an interest and is interested in taking advantage of what's out there. It does not shut off any any track for them. And I just, I can't emphasize that enough. It's, we've seen it many, many, many times over.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any other questions or comments? Looking around the screen. Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. We'll move on then to the I U four report, and that's, that's for me. We actually had our I U meeting. And everything's going well at the I U, just as it's going well up at the VOTEC. We did have one thing that we did that's a little bit different. We passed a referral incentive, as Mr. Jacobs was saying, it's difficult to get folks and the I U for, you know, the public that's out there. We are part of the intermediate unit, Midwestern Intermediate Four is the exact title, but what it is, is that all the districts in Butler, Lawrence, and Mercer County, there's twenty-seven total districts. And they provide, for the most part, special education services that schools can can purchase from them to take care of that, you know, where we have our own in Seneca, Butler has our own Mars, for instance. Other school districts don't have those resources, so they use the resources of the I U. It's based out of Grove City, and it becomes a little more challenging to get folks, you know, up there. So what they've asked us to do from the H R standpoint is look at a referral incentive for our employees. So basically, if someone up there can find, you know, a good candidate, they recommend them, that candidate goes through the process. They're not automatically hired, but they go through the process. If they're found to be someone that we should hire, then if they remain employed with us for sixty days, then that employee who recommended them will get a five hundred dollar or one-time bonus. So we put it in a place through, I think it's September first of next year. Had to check my notes. Just so that the program, it's pilot, we're gonna see what happens, but we've been understaffed in some different areas. We're hoping this can help. So we're gonna find out. So hopefully, this is something I'll be able to report, you know, success story back to you folks, you know, in the months to come. But that was probably the big thing. The other one is the H V A C system. I know, you know, I spoke about that before, how we were putting the new H V A C system in. It was coming along just fine. The most interesting part of that is there's only one change order on that project. So, I mean, it was phenomenal from that standpoint. You know, it's gone on budget, on time, and so everything's looking great there as well. So those were the two items there. So if anyone has any questions on the I U, I'd be happy to answer them. And looking around and seeing none, we'll move on to the Whipple update. Mr. Hester, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Got a couple updates for you. First of all, playoffs have started for our fall sparts. Mrs. Miss Lewis will give us an update next week on the Seneca teams. But we have not been spared the supply chain issues the rest of the country has had, believe it or not, for playoffs. The W P I L does bring in new balls, volleyballs, soccer balls, and footballs to all playoff games. Unfortunately, the footballs have not shown up. They can't track them down. They're somewhere on a ocean liner, still in the ocean, waiting to be delivered to the U S. So they've had to go back to the the balls they've used all season. So we've not been spared that issue. Secondly, the P I A A is talking about realignment. They're in their plans right now. Within the next three weeks, the W P I L Committee will be having discussions and voting on the realignments. So we may see some changes in the leagues we play in and who we play, which should be a, should be good for some teams and bad for other teams. Finally, on November seventeenth, the W P I L is sponsoring a sportsman summit. Up to seven hundred athletes, student athletes, will participate in that, and it's an effort to, you know, talk about sportsmanship, how to create a better atmosphere for the players, the parents, and the coaches. And we look forward to that, that really bringing out some positive, positive effects to our future athletes. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hester. Are there any questions for Mr. Hester? I'm not seeing anyone. Thank you again. It's gonna bring us to the legislative update, and I do have an update. Find my file here. Here we go. So the first thing, there's a trial set that's gonna start this week in Harrisburg that could change how Pennsylvania funds its public schools. And it's a Commonwealth Court trial that's a result of a lawsuit that was filed in two thousand and fourteen by six school districts advocacy organization and parents that blame the state officials and the General Assembly for not needing, excuse me, constitutional obligations to provide a quote thorough and efficient, unquote, public education system. And this lawsuit is seeking to have the court say that the current school funding system is unconstitutional and order the legislature legislature to create and maintain funding that gives students the resources they need to meet academic standards and prepares them for life after graduation. The organizations bringing the lawsuit claim that Pennsylvania has underfunded schools by more than four point six billion dollars, affecting over four hundred of the state's five hundred school districts and eighty-six percent of the students in the Commonwealth who attend the school system. Pennsylvania contributes thirty-eight percent share of education funding to public schools, according to the Public Interest Law Center, and nearly ten percent less than the average of the nation at forty-seven percent. Pennsylvania ranks forty-fifth out of the fifty states in the country in its percentage of education funding. So because of this lack of state funding, advocates say more of the burden falls to the local taxpayer, driving a gap between the wealthy and poor communities. The trial begins on Friday. The case is expected to last eight to ten weeks with a decision coming months perhaps after the trial ends. So it'll be something we keep our eye on. It could have some repercussions down the line for for us and all all schools in the Commonwealth. Second one was Senate Health and Human Services Committee passing House Bill seven sixty-four. And House Bill seven sixty-four is the one that amends the Child Protective Services Law to place an employer's ability to hire an employee on a provisional basis on par with the forty-five day provisional hiring window that is currently authorized for childcare providers. So they decided that they were going to balance those two. It was more stringent for the the school districts, so they have made it so that it's on the same basis now. So it's, you know, an equal provisional hiring window. And the last item is the House, excuse me, the House Health Committee passing a motion to appeal the mask order decision. Now, with a fifteen to ten vote, the committee passed a motion to take action to appeal the October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one decision of the Joint Committee on Documents to uphold the order of acting Health Secretary, Health Secretary Allison Bean mandating masks in the K through twelve schools and childcare centers. The Health Committee disagrees with the decision that was made by the Joint Committee, and that appeal would put the matter before the Commonwealth Court. So that I wanted to to bring up as well, and I'll ask if there's any questions on any of those in the legislative update. Or if, you know, Mr. Nickel, if you had something that you found that you'd like to add as well. But don't want to cut you out of it. Looking around.
And my apologies, Mr. Giattolio, I was on mute, but no, I have nothing further to add. I think you covered two or three things that I had seen legislatively, so I appreciate you doing so.
No problem. Right? Not seeing any questions or hearing any comments, we will move on. In your backup, you'll find the financial reports for the operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food services, tax collections, and capital project funds. If you have any questions, please direct those to Ms. Burtnair, please. So the next item is doctoral research. Dr. Vitell, do you want to take this one, or would you like me to?
Dr. Roberts can take this.
I'm sorry. See, Dr. Roberts' name at the end of that. Sorry about that, sir.
No, no problem. Very briefly, we have a principal at Hayne Elementary that is conducting doctoral research on interpersonal skills, and will be doing that as a part of students learning throughout this school year. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. She'll be using a resource and helping students to focus their energies on being good classmates. And of course, through the pandemic, we certainly have seen challenges related to that. So I think it's a very worthwhile process that that they're undertaking in Hayne Elementary.
Thank you very much. I think, you know, the public should know when administrators go for their doctorates and they are able to do it on things that give back to the school as they do that, it's one of those added benefits, and we always encourage, you know, any of the staff to go and do this for their education, and whenever they're doing things that can bring back immediate benefit to the district, we're always thankful for that. So please pass it along to Ms. White, you know, and I'll do so the next time I see her as well. Now comes the moment we've all been waiting for, the bond issuance presentation. So I would like to turn, Ms. Burtnair, do you want to take care of introductions here?
Yes, Mr. President, I would be happy to. This evening, we have two familiar faces. I'm pleased to say we have Ms. Alicia Reash Henry with us this evening. She's the Managing Director at P N C Capital Markets. She will be presenting first about our proposed bond issue, upcoming bond issue. And then following Ms. Reash Henry's presentation, Mr. Christopher Brewer will be doing a brief conversation with the board about what to expect coming up here next week. So with that, Alicia, if you would like to start, and Dr. Palano, if you wouldn't mind, after Alicia introduces herself, we do have one page that we would like to display that Alicia will be speaking to.
Thank you, Ms. Burtnair. It's a pleasure to see you all tonight virtually. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the School Boarded Administration. I'm very excited to discuss with you the final phase of the now Ermencrest Elementary Middle School Project. So, Dr. Palano, if you could please share my one pager. I tried to make this easy to follow when I'm explaining something virtually, but undoubtedly, this is a pretty busy sheet. So I'm gonna speak relatively slowly and try to talk to headings so that I can move through this in a way, hopefully, that's easy to follow. I'm gonna start sort of backwards. If I could draw your attention to the existing aggregate debt service, which is on the far right side, the existing aggregate debt service of the school district, this includes Phase Two of the Ermencrest Elementary Middle School Project that we financed earlier this year in January. So this is our starting point, and this would have concluded Phase Two. This debt service runs out, you can see till fiscal year thirty-four. And if you are able to see a bold, which it's not very evident, but in fiscal year twenty-four, we have been trying to eliminate a spike year that we've had, and we will accomplish that with this financing. So if you do see some bold print in fiscal year twenty-four, that is for the highlight. So now, if we could move back to the main gray box, this is an illustration of what your Phase Three twenty-million-dollar new money bond issue could look like, dated as early as February first of two thousand and twenty-two. Column one is your principal payments. You'll see that we are wrapping around your existing debt service. As I mentioned, your existing debt service drops off in fiscal year thirty-four. So you'll see an amortization of this bond issue largely in fiscal year thirty-four and thirty-five, and a very small piece in fiscal year thirty-six. So again, this bond issue will leave your debt service still very aggressive with a term shorter than fifteen years and roughly thirteen years plus. I wouldn't even say it's thirteen and a half. It's just thirteen years and plus. Given the market, these bonds are gonna sell at a premium, so I would like to focus your attention to the yields, not so much the coupons. Again, these bonds will sell at a premium. Then we have your annual interest column following. And then you will see a column called Less Capitalized Interest. Capitalized Interest is a tool the district has used in the past to phase in debt service. Not to jump ahead, but if you see the colored columns in blue and orange, we have been following the same structure since the beginning, where we've tried to manage the year-over-year change in the budget for Ms. Burtnair. So we are using capitalized interest as a tool, and there will be no budgetary impact of this bond issue in this current fiscal year. The final column is the gross debt service, which takes the principal in the first column, the annual interest, subtracts the capitalized interest, and gives you your gross debt service for the district. So when you add that column to the existing aggregate we first discussed, this the slim gray box, the projected aggregate debt service is sort of not really in the center, but follows. And you'll see the debt service methodically jumps at a little over four hundred thousand, which we've been trying to do for some time. And we will eclipse the max debt service in fiscal year twenty-five, about eleven point two million dollars. All in all, this has been a very successful financing scheme. If you look where we projected where debt service was going to be back in two thousand and eighteen, when we started this journey, you are gonna come in millions of dollars under budget due to where interest rates are today. So this bond issue illustrates a twenty-million-dollar bond issue. The interest rates sadly have come up a little bit since the COVID COVID lows of a year ago, but we're still at very attractive interest rates. And this also does actually with your budget this year, even with this incremental change in your debt service. The annual debt service ratio with the general fund budgets of the district is going to fall below eight percent. So this is a very manageable debt burden for a district of your size. I think I've hit all the main points, but I'll turn it back to Ms. Burtnair. If you have any questions, or if the board has any questions before Chris Brewer discusses our next steps. If you have any questions or if the board has any questions before Chris Brewer discusses our next steps.
Are there any questions for Mr. Nickel?
Yeah, and if we could throw that that slide back up, if you'd mind for just a second or two. I don't know if I'd call them questions, just if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Henry. And you've already started to speak to it, some of the different things that are sort of the bellwethers of, you know, are we at are we at a an acceptable or a prudent debt level? You mentioned eight percent of, which I assume is eight percent of our overall budget. I know that we've been pretty proud of keeping the maturity of our overall indebtedness on a pretty tight leash. We're adding, you know, a couple of years here, but still within thirteen or fourteen, fifteen years. But could you take just a minute? You know, we've got, we have seventy eight folks attending alongside of us, so this is actually kind of more for them, certainly for members of our board. But, you know, to speak to our current debt rating and and how, you know, the agency that is given us this rating has analyzed us as a district, even and I assume on a pro forma basis with this incremental indebtedness, to give, you know, whatever rating they've given us and which is an indication of our financial health. So if you just take a few minutes, sort of, you know, public debt kind of one oh one, I really, I think our attendees would appreciate it.
No, absolutely, Mr. Nick. I'd be happy to do that. If you can see down below the figures, there's some some words. It talks about the ratings and enhancement. The Seneca Valley School District should be very proud. You have a double A one credit rating. The only rating you could hope to achieve better would be a triple A, and that is a very, very hard rating to achieve. So a double A one is by far one of the most excellent bond ratings that you could expect to have as a Pennsylvania school district. You mentioned the debt and the percentage of the debt to your annual debt service. That's also a very positive. That has declined below eight percent this fiscal year, so that's a positive. You are still considered to have a very aggressive debt amortization. That's one of the things that were listed as a pro in your last rating report. Other positives listed by Moody's were your very strong reserves and liquidity. The number one point that any school district is ranked upon is how much liquidity do you have? How much fund balance do you hold? How well can you weather a pandemic? Those types of things that are unforeseen. So between the growth in your taxable base, your very, very strong reserves, which actually are in a triple A category, your your reserves would rank you in the triple A category. So again, and your debt amortization was listed as aggressive in the last Moody's report. So those are the three criteria, three key criteria that were listed that put you in that double A one category.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. The follow-up question just to Ms. Burtnair, you know, and and I I think you've covered it a bit, Ms. Henry, with regards to an aggressive amortization schedule. It's less than eight percent of our budget, but, you know, Ms. Burtnair, you and I worked together on these for, you know, a decade now. You know, do we feel comfortable that our projected annual debt service, which is that nice balanced look from fiscal twenty five on at about eleven point two million? From a budgetary perspective, your comfort level with that debt service as part of our overall operating budget? And you're on mute, Ms. Burtnair.
I am quite comfortable with with that level of debt. We intentionally targeted about four hundred and fifty thousand incrementally phasing that in, so it would be manageable. And we knew exactly where, well, knock on wood, we targeted exactly where we wanted that to to top off at. And it does position us quite well for any future needs also.
Thanks. And just by way of commentary, I mean, I I'm a numbers guy for those attendees on board. I my in my day job, I'm a commercial finance professional. I admittedly don't do public indebtedness, but I've learned a lot with Ms. Burtnair and Ms. Henry over the last decade or so. I I I wanted them to point all these things out to echo what I already knew, which is that we're in a really good place financially, that debt is the part of any is a part of any capital structure of any business, right? And let's not kid ourselves, you know, we're in the business of education, but this is a financial organization, and we've got prudent debt service, prudent, you know, leverage ratios. We've planned ahead, taking on an additional twenty million dollars of debt is exactly what we mapped out a handful of years ago. And so not that it means, not that you're looking for my support of this, but I just, I'm fully on board with taking on this last step. You know, this helps us get finished with Airman and keeps us in position with our, you know, what I've said many times is this living capital spending plan as we think about paving parking lots, you know, having boilers that work, all the maintenance items, and then looking into the future for what are some of the other larger projects that our district has? And we're in, we're in a great position for all of that. So I both Ms. Henry and Ms. Burtnair, I put you a little bit on the spot, but I appreciate you taking a few minutes. I think it's beneficial for any of the members of our constituency who are in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nickel, if you would also, I would like to add, one of the other measures is the amount of principal debt that you carry related to your ongoing revenue, and it's a standard measure. And one thing to remember, just like with a mortgage, with each year as you pay your debt, so you always measure your total debt payment in terms of your revenue inflow. But you also look at your total outstanding principal obligations. So a piece to remember is as you are making your annual debt payments, just like your mortgage payments for your home, is you are paying down your principal. So when we have the need to borrow, we do borrow a certain amount of principal, but as you're looking at these schedules where we're we're paying debt each year, keep in mind that a piece of what we are paying is we are paying off principal each year also.
Thank you, Ms. Burtnair. Any other questions, Mr. Jacobs, or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Toole. I have just, I have a tactical question. Can can someone remind me how the annualized interest expense is calculated? What rate is used to calculate to get to that figure?
Absolutely, Mr. Jacobs. Tax exempt bonds are sold up on a index called an MMD, Municipal Market Data. The interest rate that I'm using today is conservative. It's an all-in rate of a two eighty seven. I will tell you that rates have been very volatile as of late due to inflationary concerns, but with the Fed meeting this week, there has been some dovish talk on future rate increases next year. I have about a thirty basis point buffer in here, so if we were to sell bonds today, the all-in rate would be somewhere around two sixty.
Thank you.
And your bonds sell at a spread off of that MMD index, which is triple A. So you're you're trading at the thinnest margin off of that index.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions, comments? You know, before we get to Mr. Brewer, I'd just like to bring up, you know, looking at these numbers for over a decade, like Mr. Nickel was saying, one of the things that we were always looking at is trying to keep, you know, that debt service low. Right now, we're, you know, at the seven point three percent after this, it will go up a little bit to seven point seven. That's about thirty percent lower than, you know, our neighbors, you know, in Northern Allegheny County. So, you know, we've been doing things this way for a long time to make sure that we can keep that, you know, low for us. And, you know, you also look at the fact that, you know, our tax structure is, you know, forty percent of what theirs are. So, you know, when we look at long-term financial planning, this is part of that. It allows us to keep, you know, not just, you know, the debt service manageable, but the tax rates for, you know, being able to do what we do low for this long-term approach that we've adopted for for quite some time now. So I'll look around one more time for questions for Ms. Henry before we go to Mr. Brewer. And not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brewer, let me let Lynn introduce you. Sorry, didn't mean to do that.
Oh, that was quite all right. You you have a floor, Mr. Brewer.
Well, thank you all, and this is Chris Brewer from Benzmore and Shaw. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I'll try to be brief about what I need to describe and discuss with you tonight, the legal side of this. Assuming that, of course, the board would like to proceed to get the third phase, the financing in place for the school building, the new building. This resolution that we prepared, it's been reviewed by not only Ms. Henry, but by Ms. Burtnair, by Matt, Mr. Hoffman, your sister. It authorizes the indebtedness for this final phase. The project description here is, of course, the completion financing, although we've included a brief allusion to the fact that if you should have extra funds and you need to move to another project or something down the road, we're going to leave that open so that you don't have to come back and edit this document in the event of the happy fact of a excess amount of money from this issue. That said, the plan, of course, is to tailor this last piece of your transaction and your financing to the right amount of money you need to complete the project. Ms. Burtnair's been watching the cash flow carefully, and one reason we're asking you to consider this at next week's meeting is that by getting this so-called not-to-exceed resolution in place, you have taken the action in need, you have delegated authority, the board president, you have authorized borrowing so that when the market is right and in our facts and figures are most opportune, we'll get this last financing sold. That is expected to be in January with a closing in February. What would change that, what might accelerate it, would be if, in fact, the spending happens quicker than thought or the market produces such a great opportunity that we are able to move quickly and take advantage of it. So we're presenting this to you for a vote next week to really kind of just put us into the starting blocks and be as prepared and to keep all of the options open that we can. The document's somewhat lengthy when you see it, but it's consistent with the ones we've given to you in the past for this purpose because it not only authorizes certain actions under Pennsylvania's Dead Act, but there are both federal tax and securities law covenants and other things to put the bond issue out of market and into place. Let me mention, though, the one thing that could catch your eye. Because this is a not-to-exceed resolution, because we're designing and authorizing a borrowing that is not yet known in its exact detail, we have a not-to-exceed amount of twenty five million dollars. This also is consistent with past practice, and the not-to-exceed amount is to afford PNC and Ms. Burtnair all the flexibility necessary to move around principal in given years to get to that overall debt structure that you want. Under Pennsylvania law, when a board passes a borrowing on a not-to-exceed advanced kind of authorization basis, we've got to have flexibility, not only in the total aggregate, not only with maximum rates, but also with the principal allocated each and every year. So while we say twenty five million, we're really expecting the net to be twenty. I mentioned this also because Ms. Ms. Henry mentioned and made allusion to the fact that your bonds will sell at a premium. She didn't mean, although it's true, she didn't mean that they're gilt-edged. They are. You've got a great security that you're going to put in the market. But what she really meant was is that in today's low-interest-rate environment, bondholders will pay up, will pay a premium price in order to buy up their rate. It's really the reverse of points on a mortgage that you might have experienced in your own home finance when you decided to pay a half a point or a point on a borrowing to buy down your interest rate for the future. Investors, if you saw those two columns on our spreadsheet, will get a stated interest rate of a three or four percent, but their yield will be well below that because they're going to pay a premium. So there's now three numbers at play. The amount of money we expect to borrow for you is about twenty million. The schedule that Alicia showed you set a par amount of eighteen and a half because of the premium that's in these calculations by not to exceed twenty five, for no other reason than the technicality of affording us all the flexibility we need to move around that final maturity schedule. Now that I've totally confused you, I'll take questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brewer? Don't see any. Mr. Brewer and Ms. Henry, I will say that, you know, seeing you folks for however many years now, well over a decade, it's been always informative. You know, I know we have a hundred folks that are joining us that probably never saw any of this, so that's why we were maybe a little bit slower going through some of these things and asking some questions that, you know, we pretty much knew the answers to, but wanted to make sure that the rest of the public did. For those that that didn't pick up on, Mr. Brewer is our bond counsel. So he basically is making sure that everything we do is legal in the bond world of municipal borrowing. It's really simplifying your job, Mr. Brewer, and I apologize for that. But he's there to make sure that we don't do anything, you know, out of step with with what we should be doing. And Ms. Henry is our expert on making sure that we're getting the money that we need at the rates that we also need and making sure that the the money works. And of course, they're working with Ms. Partner as our business manager to make sure this all flows correctly. I think the members of the board, you know, we've been through this a couple of times at least, so we we understand some of the nuances of all this. You know, and what we're going to do next week is basically, you know, vote so that these folks can go out, do the job to make sure that we have the the money to complete Ermen. And I'm sure that they're going to get us even, you know, a better deal than what they're even saying. But I think, you know, Mr. Brewer explained it, you know, we got to look at the worst case scenario with the twenty five. But, you know, he's always been successful with us. Ms. Henry's always been able to get us better rates than even what we expect sometimes. So we've always been appreciative of their efforts. So I'll look around for again to make sure, is there any other questions for Ms. Henry or Mr. Brewer at this point? Or any questions on the bonds at all?
Mr. DeToole, I would just add, the number one question I get as superintendent from parents sometimes when we are going to borrow is, why would we ever borrow money? Why wouldn't we just tax and build what we need to build? So you can imagine when you're taking on large capital improvements as this district has been doing in the last ten years because we didn't prior. And as our district continues to grow, and that'll lead us into my next report soon about enrollment, if we were to not borrow and to tax in the year that we built the big buildings, we wouldn't be able to smooth out those tax rates either. So while it seems to be uncomfortable at times for school districts to borrow money, it's very necessary, especially for large districts like ours that continue to grow. And I don't know, Mr. Nickel convinced me of that many years ago, serving on our Business and Finance Committee. So I want our public to know that as well.
Dr. Dr. Vital, if I could jump in here to add a footnote to what you just said, because I very much applaud that statement and that thinking. It is also that in the world of public finance, I don't think it's inappropriate, and I think it's a good concept, that you want to finance these assets over the lives of the buildings and therefore over the over the different taxpayers in your community who benefit and take advantage and are served by those facilities. So if you increase taxes dramatically to pay for the building all today, that would mean everybody today is paying for it and might not have the use of it. So, you know, while interest expense is certainly an expense and it robs you of dollars for maybe other purposes, it also, though, is the way that in the public sector you average out the the value to all of your taxpayers over time. And thank goodness, the federal government, by their tax laws, gives you a break and lets you borrow at a lower rate than anybody else.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Burtnair, do you have any closing words?
I I can't begin to add anything beyond what Ms. Henry and Mr. Brewer have brought to the table. Their expertise is is wonderful, and they have served this district well.
Well said. Ms. Henry, Mr. Brewer, thank you very much. I don't know, will we be seeing you in person or virtual next week? Or are we just going to pass the resolution at that point?
I'm available to attend virtually next week if you like, and therefore, if there are any questions or anything when you get to the vote, I could be available.
I'm going to recommend that just in case something strange comes up. I doubt it. You know, but we always like seeing your face anyway. So if you don't mind to attend virtually, we we very much appreciate it.
Be my pleasure.
Mr. DeToole, I will be at a live meeting, so if anybody has any questions throughout the week that please get them to Ms. Burtnair. I'll be sure to address them. I will not be able to zoom in. I'll be standing in a live meeting, but she will be able to reach me should I be needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take that under advisement required. Okay. Again, thanks a lot to both of you, and we look forward to getting this done.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night. We will move on then to our next item agenda, which is student enrollment. Dr. Vitale, if you would, please.
Thank you. So I have an October first report to share with you. Why October first? You do have a lot of movement in numbers, August and September, and sometimes students will move out of the district, and it may take a while for that record request to come to us, especially if they move out of the country or out of state. So the Pennsylvania Department of Education always asks us to take a snapshot on October first. And we have an enrollment supervisor at And we have an enrollment supervisor at Seneca Valley. And she does a wonderful job. As a matter of fact, she sends our core team at the central office weekly reports. She also tracks external cyber charter movement. And monitors those bills with the business office. And so I'd like to start by sharing with the public the report that she shared with us. The good news is our enrollment as a school district is up. As you know, there are 501 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania and most of their enrollments are down. As a state, Pennsylvania public school enrollment is down. And that speaks to the age of the population in Pennsylvania in the Commonwealth. But at Seneca Valley, we're very fortunate, we continue to grow. But we have been growing in the last 10 years at a rate where we can plan and prepare. So that's always a good thing when you're sitting in my chair that we have time to prepare for the enrollment increases. And as I'm giving you this October 1st report, please know that yes, a month has gone by and those numbers continue to increase, we know that. As well as we have additional residential developments that have been approved in Cranberry, Jackson Township. And other boroughs and municipalities in our school districts, so this, these numbers will continue to go up throughout the year, we'll continue to monitor them. On October 1st of last year, we had a total of 349 new students come into the district. October 1st this year, we had 477. Those are the gross totals before I begin subtracting out those students who withdrew and went somewhere else. And reasons, and we also track by lines, for instance, we track how many went out of district. How many went out of state? How many went out of the country? How many came in from within the Commonwealth? How many students came in from out of state? So we track all these different areas. We also track foster, how many foster students we received within the district? How many are coming from cyber in or out? We're tracking external cyber charters where the district pays tuition, but these would be students living in our district. We are also tracking homeschool enrollments. We are tracking private school enrollments, many of the private schools, almost all, especially those that are parochial. We provide busing, we provide nursing services. And we provide other ancillary services like special education evaluations. Many people don't understand that, so I want to make sure we're clear about that. So while we may be transporting to our buildings somewhere in the neighborhood of 7,200, 7,300, that number fluctuates. We overall are transporting close to 8,000 students. So we are one of the bigger districts in Western Pennsylvania and one of the bigger districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So I told you, the new students this year, new students coming into our buildings. And as compared to last year, 477 this year, 349 new students last year. Withdrawn students, 307 who moved or went to a different school, 307 this year, 370 last year. So what are the net totals when I subtract those out with all the different categories? The October 1st, 2019. So let's go back and look at pre pandemic. October 1st of 2019, Seneca Valley had 7,274 students attending either our brick and mortar. Buildings, nine of our buildings, or our internal cyber SVAOC programs. October 1st, 2020, we had 7,225 students. October 1st this year, we have 7,382 students. So you see, just in one year, we've jumped about 157 students, so we're really pleased about that. The net over the last three years have been, has been closer to 100, I think it was 108. So we continue to track those numbers, that's not significant when you look at 7,382 students. But it is significant when we talk about planning for the future. Because each year, if we go up between 50 and 100 students, that's something we have to make sure we're planning for when it comes to our buildings. And we have to constantly break out that enrollment per building as well. Looking at Connequessing Valley Elementary School, Rowan Elementary School, Hayne Elementary, Hayne Middle. Evan City Elementary, Evan City Middle, and then our three secondary buildings, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So we use these totals because about every seven or eight years, we do a demographic study. And we hire demographers to predict where we're headed. And one thing that's true is they're never completely right. Because they can't predict all of the different changes, for instance, no one predicted a pandemic. And we certainly didn't predict during a pandemic that our enrollment would go up, so I find that very interesting as well. One would think we would have lost enrollment, and that's not the case. So I'm pleased to tell you, we continue to grow at a pace that is manageable and that we can plan for. At this time, we would also like to give you an external cyber charter enrollment update from Dr. McKinley. This will be K to 12, and then we'll go to the internal cyber enrollment, and this would be Dr. McCarty. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, I will be covering the outside cyber charter numbers. And I will go back, what we're looking at with these is we look at the enrollment as of May 1st on these dates. How many students were basically there the whole year? So I am going to go back again, pre pandemic to May 1st of 2018. At that point, we had 113 students enrolled in external cyber charters. The following year, May 1st of 2019, still pre pandemic, we had 109, right around that same number. Yeah, on May 1st of 2020, so when everything shut down was March of 2020, so this is May 1st of 2020. We had 115 students enrolled at that point. And then last year, May 1st, 2021, so we had the full year in the pandemic. We had 196 students enrolled in external cyber charters. Of course, we're not to May 1st yet in this school year, but I do have two other numbers to share with you. The first one was a look on August 1st. So it's right after that, May 1st, three months after. And prior to this current school year, the numbers reduced back to 112. So right back to a similar rate where we were pre pandemic. They, the numbers have crept up a little bit over the couple of months, so as of October 1st. We had 125 students, those are our most recent numbers, official numbers, again, 125 as of that time. So we have stayed, although they did bounce up some during the full year of pandemic. They retrieved back to where they were, and so the numbers have been pretty similar. At this point, I will turn it over to Dr. McCarty to talk about our in-house cyber numbers.
Dr. McKinley, just to, I know we're throwing a lot of numbers at you, I'm going to give you kind of the overview as of where we are this week. So our, inside our Seneca Valley cyber program, we have 234 full-time cyber students for Seneca Valley. We actually have 1,040 hybrid students, so again, as you remember. There are this children who use our traditional program, but may take a cyber class or a couple of cyber classes, so. Just to repeat, 230 full-time cyber students, 234, excuse me, and 1,040 hybrid students. And we do have that broken down through our K4, all the way through our 912 environments, and I'll give you those quickly. In our K4 environment, we have 65 full-time cyber and 30 hybrid. In our 56 middle schools, we have 25 full-time cyber and 58 hybrid. In our 78 building, Ryan Glor, we have 30 full-time cyber and 87 hybrid. In our 9 through 12 intermediate high school, we have 114 full-time cyber and 865 hybrid students. Thank you.
So before I move to the Cranberry Township Residential Development Report. Do we have any questions from the board about student enrollment? External cyber charter enrollment or our internal cyber program run by Dr. Maganello and Mr. Porter?
I have one question or comment, just looking over the data. It appears, you know, brick and mortar, you know, really, you know, performing arts seemed to be the one place that the students were going and we, over the past. Four or five years have been getting more and more of those students back. And I, it's, I believe it's because, you know, we've increased, you know, our performing arts. Programs and the ability for, for those students who want to stay within the Seneca Valley organization and. You know, they're growing within us, and that's, I think, due to, I believe that it's due to the. The offerings that we've had and we've been able to make, so had we looked at, you know. Especially with the pandemic and what that has done to, you know, brick and mortars and getting those folks back, but the performing arts students. That might have gone to an outside placement, are we seeing new faces back now? Is that one of the things that those numbers are lower, or is it just, you know, just an anomaly that we're seeing right now?
First of all, I would say that we've always, Seneca Valley has been known for its performing arts program, its music program. I mean, you've had a state of the art program for many, many years, even before I was at Seneca Valley. And you've maintained instructors who are highly qualified in those areas, and many of them are professional musicians, even beyond being teachers. And they have increased their offerings, Dr. McKinley, working with curriculum committees and working with performing arts, music. Art, your art has been just an unbelievable program long before. I was at Seneca Valley, long before many of these board members were in their seats. And that's because of the type of teachers you hire. They are professional artists, professional performers, almost every one of them, that, you know, when I think about. The people that we have and they're experts in their field, so number one, you didn't lose many children to external cyber charters. For performing arts or arts to begin with as compared to other Pennsylvania schools. But then in order for them to maintain their competitiveness. And to make sure that they're offering things that students would want to take beyond the classroom, they have offered independent studies. They have brought artists in residence in, and they've grown all of that through the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice as well. And so I really think the key to your success here, why you have less than 100 students external, at external cyber charters as compared to other districts your size. Is because of the flexibility you've built into your programming. Dr. McKinley, I don't know if you want to add anything from a curriculum perspective?
I was just going to add, I don't think students left, as Dr. Vitale said, I don't think students left because of the performing arts piece. I think they left during the pandemic for other reasons. And have come back, and I think one of the biggest things is that we've been in person all year. And students are happy to see that, so I think that's, that's one of the biggest reasons why many students have come back to the district.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Let's, oh, Ms. Bradle.
You might not have the number available, Dr. McKinley, but what is the number of students that are from other districts that participate in our cyber program?
You're correct, I don't have that number with me, I know last year we were well over 10,000 students. We have, I do know we have partnered with 70 other districts or organizations. And that, that continues to grow, even, even if we're not marketing, you know, word of mouth, districts talk to each other. So that just continues to grow. I know we're not at 10,000 this year, it's a little bit different, just the type of year it is, but I can get that number for you for next week.
Estimate is good enough. Thank you.
And I think it's an appropriate time to point out that early on in our cyber program, our internal cyber program. Students at the secondary level over time express to us, and then elementary students that were out in our program. During the pandemic expressed that they wanted to have more interactive time, tutorial sessions and interactive time. Even virtually with our teachers. And I want to commend those teachers that teach in our cyber program. While they were better equipped to pivot, they certainly didn't have it easy. And so they, they've done huge recruiting efforts also to get our students back from external cyber charters, and it's worked, number one. But number two, they were willing to, instead of being defensive about their program, say, well, how can we make it better? And they listened to student and parent feedback, and so I'm very appreciative that they were still willing. In the middle of already being a good program, to listen to students and parents to make it even better.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our next item, back to you, Dr. Vitale, for Cranberry Township Presidential Development.
Thank you. As you know, we receive updates from any borough, municipality or township within our school district. That has approved housing developments. So the one that we've received at the end of October is from Cranberry Township. They're letting us know that a new development by the name of Brant Drive Apartments. It is a new construction on Brant Drive. The township first approved this development the end of June. But they're letting us know now that it is under construction. And they are projecting that there will be 264 multifamily residential units. So again, we are looking for that to boost our enrollment. And we'll continue to keep that in mind for future planning when it comes to capital improvements, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, any questions? Hearing and seeing them, we'll move on and back to again, Dr. Vitale for the COVID-19 update, please.
Thank you, this evening I'll start with our school district numbers, we have seen a spike in the last three weeks, but especially these past seven days. Our active student cases are at 54, there are 170 students in quarantine. There are seven active staff cases, one staff in quarantine, so our total active cases, adults and students combined. Are at 61 and total in quarantine is 171. I know that continues to be frustrating for those in quarantine, we empathize. It's, it's still a very difficult time, but we're proud that we can still keep our doors open and offer live streaming for those impacted by COVID. In each of our buildings, we have a breakout of all of those cases. You can find this on our website, our Seneca Valley website, click on COVID-19, you'll see all the statistics there, I won't go over all of those. But I do want to go to the state numbers now. In Butler County, last week, the early warning dashboard was down quite a bit. And now we're seeing a peak again, which the experts tell us is from Halloween. So the difference in confirmed cases from the most recent seven day period to the most previous seven days. Is we're up by 173 cases comparing one week to the next. The incident rate is 266.2. The PCR percent positivity rate went up this week, and that's at 14.3. So we continue to manage COVID as best we can. I do want to thank our nurses, our nurses got hit pretty hard with contact tracing last week. As a matter of fact, they handled 20 cases across two days. I want to thank our teachers, it is not easy to do in person and live streaming at the same time. All of our staff is, they're really burning the candle at both ends, so, you know, I want to thank them. I know they're already burned out and it's only November. I want to thank them for hanging in there and being cooperative, and I want to thank our families. And I do want to ask that our families not yell at our nurses, it's not their fault. As a matter of fact, they're working weekends and weeknights. And please, if we could just be patient with one another as we continue to walk through this pandemic. Sadly, it doesn't look like it's getting any better. But we are just maybe learning to deal with it a little better in schools. We are looking at, when I look at the summary that we've tracked. Our Butler County wide incident rate from the PA DOH numbers that we put on a spreadsheet, the 14-day average, the rolling average. We're sitting at 83.4 as of November 7th. And as I look back, we were in the 60s in October. So that is jumping up a little bit, but there were times in October we were in the 100s, so we're just seeing these, you know. Valleys and peaks, valleys and peaks. The Butler County incident rate, the seven-day rolling is at 727, that's a cumulative rate in the last seven days in the entire county. But what people are typically most interested is when I break down those zip codes. So let me go into those. On 11/8, when we pulled this data from today, but this is across the last three days. So it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we had 32 cases, not that bad. We've seen a lot worse. So Cranberry Township and Evan City, Harmony, Mars, Renfrew, Zillion Opal, when we go across all of those cumulatives since the pandemic started and look at the totals, the increasing cases from the previous day. So this was the entire weekend. In all of those different zip codes, we were looking at 79 additional cases. So we've seen worse, but we are at a higher level right now that we didn't see last week. So just when we think the numbers are going in the right direction, we see them pop back up. We do know based on the pandemic last year, we saw spikes after Halloween, after Thanksgiving and after the winter break. So you may be aware that the governor made an announcement today that the universal masking in schools will end from his perspective on January 17th. We don't know for sure why, why he chose that date, but we expect that he, we assume that he chose that date because that's two weeks after the holidays and after New Year, New Year's. So we will continue to monitor these numbers and report into you as a board and I will have a report ready for next week as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vitale. Are there any questions for Dr. Vitale? I don't see any. So we will move on in our meeting. Usually during a meeting that we have action, this is where we would have a public comment session. However, we don't have any action today. So public comment is at the end of the meeting. So we're still going to have public comment, but they will be at the end. This is typically where we'd see it. Just to hold off with, or hold on with us and we'll get there shortly. So I'm going to move on in our agenda. And next week we'll be looking to approve the minutes that are provided in your backup for our work session of October 4th and our regular meeting of October 12th. We'll show, look to approve the treasurer's report as providing your backup and the general fund bills and the amount of $3,720,608.6. That's providing your backup as well. And we'll look to approve the construction fund bills in the amount of $4,057,890.80. And that is also in your backup. If you have any questions on any of those items this week, please get in touch with Ms. Partner. We'll move on to administrative action and I'm going to ask Mr. Nickel to take this one, if you don't mind, sir.
Happy to do so, Mr. Tulio. Next week, we will be seeking action on the following administration action items. The first would be approving our school board meeting dates from January through June of 2022. Those dates are in all of our backup. The second is an Act 26 memorandum of understanding, to approve that Act 26 memorandum of understanding between the Seneca Valley School District and local law enforcement agencies, detail on that agreement or those agreements, as there are multiple are provided in our backup. And finally, to approve a future ready comprehensive plan submission. This is to approve the Seneca Valley School District's future ready comprehensive plan for 2021 through 2024. This is to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And so those are the three action items that we will have next week for consideration, Mr. Tulio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nickel. Are there any questions on any of these items? Looking around, I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on. For instruction action, I'm going to take this in Ms. Harrison's absence. Next week, we'll be looking to approve the following items, the conferences, to approve the conferences that are provided in our backup. The school at McGuire Memorial Agreement to improvement, the agreement with the McGuire Memorial to provide educational services during the 2021, 22 school year. And this is in our backup and it's also pending final solicitor review. Hope Learning Center Agreement to approve the Hope Learning Center Agreement to provide school-based access services through the 2022, 23 school year and that backup will be provided. Student trip to acknowledge a student educational trip to Italy on June 14th through the 23rd, 2022. Exact dates may change slightly according to enrollment numbers under the supervision of Amy Sealbaugh at no cost or liability to the district. And student adjudications will look to approve the following student adjudications. These were discussed in executive session. Item number 2021, 22 dash O2 and 2021 dash 22 dash O3. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? I'll say it's, it's nice to start seeing some normality come back and student trips start popping up on the agenda again. Since there's no questions or comments, we'll move on to business finance action. I'll go to Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tulio. We have six items for next week. The first is the December bills, authorize the administration to pay December bills. The next one relates to supplies and equipment bids, authorize the administration to seek bids for supplies and equipment for the 2022, 23 school year. Next is a joint purchasing agreement with MIU4. Authorize, approve the joint purchasing agreement with the Midwestern Intermediate Unit 4 for 2022, 23 as included in the backup. Next relates to change orders, approve the construction change orders for Ermun Crest Elementary and Middle School as included in the backup. Fifth item is budget transfers, approve the budget transfers as included in the backup. And the final item is stat staffing agreement. Approve the stat staffing medical services, Inc. Agreement to provide medical services through the 2021, 22 school year as included in the backup.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Anyone have any questions or comments on any of these items? Look around, I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to personal action. Mr. Woodson was having some problems technically, so I will take care of this. We'll look next week to approve the resignations, appointments, leaves and retirements. They're providing our backup and discussed in executive session. That brings us to letters that were sent to the school board and emails. There's 30 of those that we received since our last meeting. And, you know, we, we've all received those, we've all read those and they've all been responded to in one form or another. So that will bring us now to the public comment portion of our meeting. And for this part, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Pallano in a second to introduce it. However, let me take care of a few housekeeping issues that we've developed here. One of the questions has come up, I'd like to address real quick is our virtual meetings and the decision to hold the school board meetings virtually until the current mask mandate order by the Department of Health and Department of Education is lifted was done to ensure that our meetings would be able to be held with maximum public participation and minimum complication. For anyone that may feel that they're not being heard, I again invite them to contact me directly. My personal phone number is listed on the website. And I was looking around over the weekend and there's no other districts in our area whose board president not only lists their personal number, but actively invites the members of the community to contact them. So I'm going to keep that out there to folks. Feel free to give me a call. I can always schedule a call back. It might not be immediate, but definitely get you on the schedule that we can talk. So bring it to the public comment guidelines. Again, this is our board policy allows us for 30 minutes of public comment with each speaker allowed up to four minutes. We have extended that time to one hour and are allowing 15 speakers to register. Per our policy, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, which is me. No participant may address or question the board members individually. Speakers are not allowed, or they are allowed, I'm sorry, to name and speak of their own children, but are unable to reference other students by name. The public comment portion is just that, an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, information and opinions on our upcoming board votes. I ask that you please address the board with respect and civility, just as you would expect to be treated in your own home or workplace and just as we expect students to act in our classrooms. Again, this board has done its very best to keep politics out of the boardroom and away from our school board agendas. This is not where we campaign. This is where we conduct official school business. So I'm going to ask that our speakers tonight also refrain from anything involving elections or campaigns. I'm going to set a timer that will go off at 3:30 as a signal to the speaker to wrap up their comments at four minutes. I'll let the speaker know that they've reached their limit as a second indicator to complete their comments. And finally, in accordance with our policy, the presiding officer, again, that is me, may interrupt or terminate a participant's statements when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. So with those guidelines being read, I am going to look for Dr. Pallano to introduce our speakers. And Dr. Pallano, if you would remind us how many speakers are we expecting?
Sure. Originally, there were seven registered to speak this evening. However, recently we were just informed that two will no longer be speaking. Therefore, we have five individuals that will be giving public comment this evening. And yep, our first individual to speak this evening is Angela Nicum. Angela Nicum, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Perfect. Thanks. So I just first want to quickly congratulate all of the reelected board members. I know it was not easy considering the opposition from the minority. However, I just want to say yikes. I'm really proud of the way you all handled yourselves professionally and maturely. However, I am here this evening to discuss another matter, unfortunately. As we are all aware, there is a shortage of bus drivers. I am sure that this is not an easy job. However, the bus drivers that my older children have had so far have been an absolute pleasure. So I am saddened to report that since the beginning of this school year, Bus 68 at Rowan Elementary has a bus driver who daily yells, not asks, but yells at the kids to be quiet and not talk. These are six to nine-year-old children who for some are riding the bus for the first time and this is their first experience on a bus. Can you imagine being told not to talk? Several other parents and I have called and or emailed both the school and bus department and have had no response to date. Here is one example of what is happening on that bus. On September 27th, the bus driver supposedly stopped the bus in the middle of Mars Crider Road behind North Catholic High School and got out of her seat to go up and down the aisle, asking kids to verify their names and seat assignments and then told them that they could not talk. Several parents called and or emailed both the school and bus department. I was informed when I called the bus department that the video would be pulled and watched and I would get a call back. To date, I have heard nothing and this bus driver continues to drive the bus and yell at our kids for talking. Talking on the bus. I would like to read quickly something, something from the Penn dot bus driver manual. The kindergarten or elementary school age student tends to prefer a great deal of physical activity. Normally, these students have problems staying in their seats. So when they can't move, they often talk instead. Loud talking on the bus is a problem you will need a lot of patience to deal with. But absolute silence among students is not a healthy school bus atmosphere. It also states in the manual in regards to the driver stopping in the middle of Mars Crider Road under serious discipline problems, drive out of traffic to a safe location, stop and secure the bus. This may be in a parking lot or a driveway. The fact that you have taken this action makes the students realize the situation is out of the ordinary. So this driver, in my opinion, should not be driving a bus if she cannot follow the Penn dot manual and tolerate kids talking. I'm not sure what the resolution is, but I do hope that this situation is looked into and I and the other parents who have complained receive a response. We have kids getting off of the bus in tears and this is not acceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Second speaker this evening is Christina Mavis. Christina Mavis, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Thank you. I apologize. Christina won't be speaking tonight. I will be speaking in regards to her. My name is Rich Surry. I'm her husband. I want to start by thanking everybody for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have one question for you all. What did you have for dinner on October 12th? And while you think about that, I want to discuss the situation as occurred within our school district. Too often we put our trust into the staff, as I've heard before, for members of the school leadership when it involves our children with no questions asked because we think they will always do the right thing morally and ethically for every single child. I have realized as a parent of a biracial special needs child, that when parents ask questions, we are then treated like the problems are laughed upon. This is what I, as a parent in SVSD have gone through in the past month. My son is 14 and suffered from severe ADHD, anxiety, rollout autism spectrum and has an intellectual disability. My son sustained a traumatic brain injury or concussion during football practice on 10/12. When he was hurt, I simply wanted answers when I asked. Not because my son was tackled, but to, to, due to the severity of his injury, I wanted answers from Coach Mickey Flood and Coach Nate Flood, who were in direct contact with him during the play that took place. After the impact even, Coach Mickey looked at the other player and stated, you're not supposed to try and kill your own teammate. As the concussion management protocol can be found on the district's website, it explains the full procedure of what coaching staff should do when a player exhibits or complains of any concussion symptoms. The very first thing that happens is the athlete is pulled off the field and parents are contacted. That never happened. Not one part of the protocol was followed. Instead, Coach Nate, Coach Nate forced my son back into practice, knowing my son was experiencing several symptoms. He was in agonizing pain and a state of confusion and he was sick to his stomach. Even though it happened in front of them and several players, the district still denied to me that anything occurred. As I started asking questions to the director of athletics and the principal of, or at RGMS, I was never taken seriously with the answers I was seeking. I then contacted Dr. Vitale where she redirected my concerns to the assistant superintendent, Dr. McKinley. As I have spoken to Dr. McKinley twice via phone, I felt he didn't treat me with the, with respect and dignity as a parent who's extremely smug and said that nothing happened during both conversations, simply because the coaches said it didn't. Not 1% of what we said to him, did he actually listen to and take into account? After total disregard for us as concerned parents asking questions, he led a botched investigation which led us to having a, to supply children's names to corroborate our story. A total of 10 students were questioned, not one of them even being my son. And they were asked extremely vague questions such as, did anyone get tackled on October 12th? Meanwhile, these interviews took place two to three weeks after the incident. Not only were the questions vague, but there was inconsistencies with who was holding the interviews. The concerning factor is that most kids can't remember what they had for dinner a few nights ago, let alone if someone was tackled during a regular practice. At no point did they ask a direct question in regard to my son's incident. As we were told that eight out of nine students stated, nothing happened that day. With one student actually stating it did, they're going to review the protocol and as a parent in this district, it's simply not enough. Especially after we asked Dr. McKinley four times about cameras in the back of the school. We believe at least four could have caught what happened that day. However, he made sure to let us know that he personally watched a whole 45 minutes of the security footage out of over two hours worth for each camera. And I felt mocked for being upset with the complete negligence occurring. As I explained, even if they had padded pants and a helmet on, that should be enough to see the two coaches are lying because they stated it should be a shorts and shoulder pads day only. He did not want to give us the time of day as he insulted us in our intelligence. We were supposed to shut up and put up and allow them to cover up situations like this. Even after the incident, as parents, we have struggled to get any sort of answers as to why the coaches didn't follow protocol, why all four coaches cornered intimidated my son by himself at the end of practice on the day he returned to school, knowing he had a concussion and his special needs or why RGMS is giving such problems to follow a simple list of medical recommendations from a specialist that deals with concussions.
You've reached four minutes.
My apologies. I just had a few more sentences.
That's fine. Just go ahead and finish up.
Okay. I sent out another email to Dr. Vitale last week where that goes unanswered while my son tries to find a quiet room to even sit during lunch himself because it's so loud. As a parent, this is an acceptable treatment towards my child or any child in this district, let alone a biracial special needs child at that. We have been lied to too many times over so many things in regards to this situation. I asked Dr. Vitale, Dr. McKinley, along with other staff, if this happens to families in the district when seeking the truth. However, that email has still gone unanswered. I wish I could say that RGMS and SVSD went above and beyond to help my son get back to his normal and that as a parent, I felt like we were heard, but that would be a lie. Instead, here I am tonight making it public to seek answers and help for what happened to my son. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker this evening is Carrie Frank. Carrie, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Frank. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'd like to start with a sincere gratitude to you, the board, for your tireless devotion to our students and congratulations to the incumbent candidates on their sweeping victory. When we talk about parent choice, we talk about the fact that we all want what's best for our children. What about those children that don't fit in based on their skin color or their sexuality? My daughter is currently in ninth grade at the intermediate school. Last year she had a Last year, she had a fellow eighth grader private message her that her belief in Black Lives Matter was wrong and that humans are like sharks greater when white. This year, at the intermediate school, the ninth grade boys are barking, barking at LGBTQ students and alternative students in the halls. The administration is aware and knows that there's a problem, but have not been able to successfully stop it. Growing up in this day and age is tough. There's enough stress and anxiety surrounding adolescents. As parents, educators, administrators, and role models, it's our job to help them, not hurt them. We cannot allow our children to enter into a building that's going to make it harder rather than easier. Before COVID nineteen pandemic, youth suicide was already at a record high. Suicide is the leading cause of death, secondly, the leading cause of death in people among ten to twenty-four-year-olds and is increasing every year since two thousand and seven. We cannot allow bullying because kids are different. The best way to prevent the bullying is to teach the kids the differences and making them aware that it is not everyone, that not everyone looks like them, and that's okay. We can't continue to punish kids that um aren't represented in our history books. We can't continue to pretend that straight white people are the only ones that matter in history. It's easy to be against something that you don't understand and something you don't know about because you don't know anyone with those issues. What's harder is actually trying to learn why others have those opinions. Growing up, I thought everyone was like me. I lived in a suburban little bubble with two amazing parents, great friends and neighbors. I thought I understood people of colors' lives because my friends that were black, brown and yellow never talked about their difficulties. I never asked. I assumed I knew what was on their hearts and carried on in my normal world, thinking that everyone had the same easy boring life that I had. I learned about American history, Christopher Columbus, the day of Americans, the Civil War, brothers fighting versus brother. But it never occurred to me that I wasn't being taught the entire whole truth. That all changed when I started working predominantly with young black inner-city kids. It started as, well, why don't they just X, Y, and Z? But then I got to know these souls on a more personal level, and I and I realized I had no idea what I was talking about. My life was made easier because of the color of my skin and theirs was made harder. I decided to delve into true American history, not the whitewashed school version. I learned that after slavery was abolished, the Thirteenth Amendment created a loophole to funnel prisoners onto the plantation fields for free labor. I learned that blacks were arrested for walking down the street or for simply looking at a white woman the wrong way, just to fill those prisons and get that cotton and tobacco picked. I learned about Jim Crow and the unfair mortgage practices against blacks, redistricting to avoid people of color in certain schools. I learned about the Trail of Tears, Asian internment camps during World War Two, Emmett Till and the Tulsa massacre. None of this crucial American history was received in my eighteen years of education. Our country was built on the backs of slaves, and our forefathers slaughtered and raped the Native Americans for this land. Why is there such a gap in our history books? Learning history didn't make me hate America. It didn't make me feel like I needed to hide the truth from my daughter. It made me mad that I didn't learn it in my youth. It's absolutely disgusting what has happened in this country if we continue to leave all of the true American history out of our classrooms. History has a real chance of repeating itself. In Germany, children are taught in great detail about the Holocaust by the time the children are ten. Ten. And you know what happens? These children acquire empathy for the people that were slaughtered in prisons and those whose lives were ruined by Hitler and his soldiers. They aren't forever hating their country because of the sins of the past. There isn't a hatred of country or constant guilt. It's simply history that we don't ever want repeated, so they teach it. I challenge you to talk to someone who's different and doesn't think like you. Have a real conversation with someone who isn't like you, maybe someone who's LGBTQ, black, brown, yellow, having real discussions that bring about change and empathy for our fellow Americans. Teaching true American history isn't racist, it's truth. Kids deserve to know it's not all sunshine and roses. And if you're the Bible reading type, I urge you to read again about what Jesus said. We should leave the ninety-nine sheep to save the one in trouble. Right now, our kids of color on our LGBTQ youths are the ones in need of extra help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Alton Temple. Alton Temple, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Alton Temple. I'm a parent of two boys in our school system, aged ten and seven. I also speak tonight as an emergency physician practicing in Pennsylvania, Ohio. Having practiced during these times, I must express how appreciative I am for all the school board's efforts to get our children back in school and provide in-person education. It truly is a tremendous balancing act with all decisions that need to be made, and I thank you for it. With the recent announcement last week of the CDC recommending the COVID vaccination for age five to eleven, with the recent EU IBA the FDA, there is another large assuming decision that seems to be looming. The government has commended this as a milestone in the pandemic. I understand that vaccines work. They save lives. There is no doubt about it. I believe pediatric vaccines are one of the most important medical innovations of time. However, they are also used with decades of data to prove their safety. This vaccine doesn't have that. The COVID vaccine without a doubt saves lives. There is no argument that can be made otherwise. The vast majority of patients I have admitted with severe COVID did not have the vaccine in previous illness. However, COVID represents a different risk risk to kids than it does to adults. It's pretty clear that severe illness correlates with advanced age and this virus with a large majority of deaths over the age of sixty-five. Yes, there are outliers, but of the more than six million reported pediatric patients who have contracted COVID, a little over six hundred have died. Is also as may a large percentage of unreported cases exist in this patient population, up to forty percent. There is, these are very small percentages compared to total cases. Most of the deaths are over the age of ten. Looking at our COVID PA tracker, there isn't even a bar for the age under ten. My children, having never had significant symptoms, flagged positive antibodies over ten months ago and continue to test Sarah positive as recently as September. Yes, I know, and I've heard healthcare workers from Children's Hospital there talk about how their hospital is being overrun. Well, you aren't alone. That's every hospital across the country, adult and pediatric. This problem is multifactorial, not directly related to vaccine availability. I think we can all agree that yes, COVID is a concern for kids, but it's nothing near what it does the adult population. The study the FDA used to approve the vaccine tested on sixteen hundred kids. Consider that compared to our school systems populations. That is a very small study. There are pediatric vaccines previously taken off the market due to complications such as rotavirus. My concern is this vaccine being mandated to attend public schools. Look, I'm not anti-vax. I'm not telling parents they shouldn't get their kids vaccinated. As I'm saying, that should be the parent's decision. This needs to be studied for an extended period of time for such a low risk population for school mandates even considered. And by extent, I mean years, not months. For this age group, the risk is relatively low. Researching the history of school required vaccines, PA, there was extended period approval of DTAP, MMR and polio before they were required in schools. Looking at literature out there, an unvaccinated ten-year-old and under child has the same risk as a vaccinated thirty to forty-year-old. Add to that, many people think forty percent of this age group have antibodies. Previous infections do have a protective benefit. The CVS has, CDC has begrudgingly admitted it, just to what extent? Look, if you're scared, I get it. And if you want to get your child vaccinated at age group, I totally get it. You should have that option. That's why the FDA approved it as it did. If my child had an illness such as leukemia, lymphoma, or cystic fibrosis, I would be first in line, but they don't. When I see their studies about COVID, I see my children, look at the relative risk, I feel comfortable about their safety when it comes to this virus in this age group unvaccinated. When I seal a trial just over sixteen hundred, that further hardens my stance that I won't vaccinate my children in this EUA. I'm not making assumptions about what anybody else's doubts are regarding the vaccines age group. This is my opinion. But it's an opinion I've researched on and feel very, very strongly about, and I'm willing to fight with every resource I have as an organization tries to mandate my lower-risk child be vaccinated without extensive research. Again, I'm not anti-vax. If you feel the vaccine child, I always do it. If your child's high risk, I always vaccinate. By all means, vaccine. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much.
The final speaker this evening is Serenity Vincent. Serenity, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd like to make a few comments tonight about our community's responsibility to the current students that live in our district and also thank our board and administration for going above and beyond that level of responsibility in your daily lives. Our district has been graduating students from Generation Z for three or four years already. These people born in nineteen ninety-seven or after represent the only reason that we are all here today at this meeting. These local citizens, mostly minors, are in our nation's public school system and are guaranteed a twelve-year-long experience that will allow them to enter society as a functioning citizen. The Department of Education since nineteen seventy-nine has not catered to the outliers, but instead attempts to balance the playing field for all of our country's youth. In my opinion, it is our job as parents of this generation to support them in their beliefs and support our public schools in their difficult task of educating thousands of very different children. Originally, Gen Z was poised to enter into adulthood into a country that had a strong economy and record-low unemployment. However, COVID nineteen has changed all that. Their oldest members that are currently eighteen to twenty-three years old have been the hardest hit of all generations with COVID, with fifty percent of people in Gen Z reporting a lost job in their household because of the outbreak. The recent graduates of our school district are much more likely to not have health insurance or any money saved in the bank than their parents or grandparents were when they graduated. Side about the students who are representative of their generation, they are very much like millennials in their social news. They see racial and ethnic diversity as a good thing. Nationally, only twenty-one percent of voters aged eighteen to twenty-three approved of the last Republican administration in office. They tend to take up social justice issues and are much more aware of global issues due to social media. Seventy percent of this generation in our country say that our government should be more active to solve society's problems, not less. And thirty-five percent of them personally know someone that prefers gender neutral pronouns. The Generation Z children will become that those children will become less than fifty percent white in the year two thousand and twenty-five. So our district's students will enter a world where their peers that are non-white are the majority of Americans, not them. So when our district's children go off to college, there will be no hiding the real world from them. Every large university in our nation has a repertoire of necessary topics, hundreds of first classes, with thousands of diverse students from all over the world attending them. At Penn State, they could encounter History one thirty-one, slavery, the Civil War and film, or History one sixteen, family and sex roles in modern America, the history of the Holocaust, the history of fascism and Nazism, family and the history of gender roles in modern society. For students that are not attending four-year universities, say trade schools or apprenticeships, almost all of these schools and workplaces require their employees to abide by strict employment rules, including equal treatment of coworkers, nondiscrimination, et cetera. Employers require a healthy workplace. Washing hands and protecting others from disease are mandatory. Having a full education is equally important to students that are not hoping to be doctors and lawyers. So if a parent is patently against their child learning about equality or racism or gender studies, then truly they are actually against higher education as a whole. This will not go well for their children's success. Denying your children the chance to answer anonymous surveys about alcohol, drugs and emotional well-being is what actual indoctrination is. Taking away a person's ability to learn and make decisions for themselves about what their beliefs and morals will be doesn't sound like freedom to me. However, this is very much a free country, and even to their detriment, parents are permitted to make decisions for their minors. They can bring all of their ignorance and medical illiteracy to their own dinner tables. Indeed, tell your children that critical race theory is the same as a math problem using non-binary students as the subject for this being.
Four minutes.
Yes, you can tell your children that mRNA vaccines actually change their own DNA and are dangerous, but you will be ill-equipped them to join adulthood with their peers and be able to compete for good jobs. Our schools are not for the preservation of ignorance. We spend millions upon millions of tax dollars to be sure that we educate everyone with the best possible set of skills and knowledge. If the parents of our district's Generation Z students want to control and blind their children to the actual spectrum of the world that these kids are going to enter, then public school is not for your family. Our nation allows for homeschooling, religious schooling and private schooling in order to satisfy the learning requirement that we mandate for our youth. If you don't support our public schools, our teachers, our staff and our curriculum, then public school is not for you. Thank you to the board for their long hours working to make our district an inclusive and supportive environment for our students.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the public public comment for this evening.
Thank you. Before I look for a motion to adjourn our meeting, is there any other business to be brought before the board?
Mr. DeTulio, I do want our public to know that we're facing, again, significant bus shortages. Mr. Pearson in our transportation department and the owners of the bus companies are working diligently. We do have a shortage for this Friday. And um they have worked to double route some buses. They believe those parents will be notified, but we have to wait. You know, it's a fluid situation. To date, uh, we will have drivers for Friday, but I'm asking for patience from our public if your bus has to be double routed or if your bus has to be canceled. We, that would be the worst-case scenario, but it could happen. The public was notified, parents were notified in a district letter. I believe that was two weeks ago, a week and a half ago. But I want to remind the public and our parents to be prepared and to have backup plans in case we cannot run buses at any time this week or next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitell. Um. We just hope that the community understands, you know, the situation we're in, you know, basically every day could look like a a snow day, you know, um, we're gonna do our best. We're working with everyone we can, Dr. Vitell. Um, you know, Mr. Pearson, the entire administration is working to make sure that that the bus situation is handled as best it can be. But it is a challenging situation. It's not just us. It's, you know, throughout the state and throughout the nation. So again, you know, a one that wants to drive a bus, we know the people put you in touch with. So anyone can help, you know, feel free to. So uh with that, um, any other issue to be brought before the board? Hearing and seeing that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Hester. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning our meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone, and we will see.